All right, I'm going to call the April 9th meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If Amy would put our flag up for us. All right, and if you don't join me, place your hand over your heart. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and if we could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins. Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present.
Thank you, Amy.
So this meeting tonight is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications in 18 TU verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, April 13th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Great, thank you, Amy. Next item is approval of the agenda, and the only request I'm going to make, similar to last time, is the first presentation that we have is that we move the city manager report up because he wants to give a, not as extensive as last time, but a little update as to what the city's doing with the current pandemic COVID-19. So with that, okay, we have a motion for approval. We have a second.
Second.
Portia's second, Brett was, made the motion. Amy will have to take a roll call since we're video here.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye, thank you. All right, first item will be city manager, Mr. Boyd.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Good evening. Just a brief update. I want to tell you that, you know, our community and our staff are doing as well as could be expected during this unprecedented time. Our community is, and I think we're seeing this in the data as well, is, you know, complying with, with the rules that are necessary to mitigate. We're getting few complaints. We are getting some with some gathering, some other things, but we're responding and handling those, and the community is overall applauding that. So I want to thank our staff for just doing, you know, an amazing job of transitioning very quickly and providing our services as we always have, albeit it's, it's in a different way at times, but it's, our services are full steam ahead in all service areas. Particularly want to thank the men and women in the police department who are really out there in the front line dealing with a lot of different things, but they're just doing a fantastic job and are really leading the way while following best practices and, and being safe. So thank you to the entire community and all of our staff and to the leadership of the council. Just a few updates. We've really been working hard in the area of our website and overall community communications. So we've recently completed a redesign and an enhancement of our COVID-19 resource page to ensure the latest information and updates are readily accessible to our residents and our businesses. The website includes daily updates of COVID-19 case counts in Sacramento County and a central place for information from Citrus Heights Partners like Sunrise Parks and Recreation, Sacramento Metro Fire, and others. We invite our community to visit citrusheights.net/COVID-19 to experience the enhancements and all of the latest information and updates. We've, we've also have sent a direct mailer. It's our goal to keep all of our residents as informed as possible during this emergency period. We know not everyone is a digital native or has access to the internet, which is why we put together a comprehensive mailer and sent to over 36,000 households this week. The piece includes information on our COVID-19 response, contact information to connect with all of City Hall's 13 service lines, as well as a spotlight on Love Local, our shop local campaign and resource. So residents can expect to see that in their mailbox in the next few days if they haven't already. Love Local, Citrus Heights Shop Local Campaign continues to be embraced by our community. The one-stop website with open business information and hours has had almost 6,000 visitors since its launch two weeks ago. The resource will also be featured in the Messenger newspaper tomorrow and shared in a live segment at 9:00 a.m. on Fox 40. We're very excited to help market our businesses and extremely proud that our community is responding in such a big way. Also during this time, we are monitoring developments at the state and the national level. While the federal government has taken steps to provide resources to families affected by the virus, it has resulted in unfunded mandates for Citrus Heights. There's a number of representatives in the House that are leading a bill to repeal the Language in the Families First Coronavirus Response Act that bars governmental institutions from receiving tax credits for providing paid sick leave and paid emergency family leave as is awarded to all of the private sector. The bill will be introduced on Tuesday, April 14th. We intend to support that effort. We're also taking steps to support HR 6467, the Coronavirus Community Relief Act, which would provide $250 billion in funding directly to cities with populations of less than 500,000. As the council may know, there's been direct relief already for all the cities in the country, which I think there's about 36, over 500,000. And I believe the city of Sacramento, that number's something like $88 million. So all of the rest of us cities really need relief. Budgetary impacts for us will be severe. We're still assessing the extent of the impact. We're working with Sacramento County to submit initial damage estimates to Cal OES. While the CARES Act provided support to the 36 largest cities in the nation, as I said, it did not include really any other governmental entity. So the national stimulus support for us would really be the key to help weather this crisis, and that is where we are spending time on advocacy. We've met with Congressman Bera along with the mayor. We've taken other actions, and we are in meetings most of the day around the financial piece as well. So that is our focus. But in the meantime, internally, we are also, the department heads and myself and key managers in finance are having serious conversations about different scenarios. And we're not going to be able to wait too long to really, you know, tear some of those scenarios out and get in front of the council, but we, with those scenarios and recommendations. But we still need more information, both on the financial damage and what relief might come our way as a city. So we need, we need both of those pieces of information to be able to bring you some recommendations. But be assured, we are focused on this every day and all day. So that is the end of my report, but again, our community's doing well. And, you know, I once again want to, you know, commend everybody for the work that they're doing together to make sure that, you know, we're going to really beat this thing and get past this crisis as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Chris? All right, next item is presentations, and I believe we have one this evening. Am I correct?
Yes, correct. Our presentation number four is a proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming April 2020 as Fair Housing Month. And Stephanie Cotter will be introducing the item and...
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council. This is Stephanie Cotter, Housing and Human Services Coordinator. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, so, thank you. So as Amy stated, this is the annual Fair Housing Month proclamation. This city supports fair housing efforts in a number of ways. We offer a free renters' helpline service for Citrus Heights residents. We offer fair housing and education resources throughout the year to tenants, landlords, and other entities. We just completed a large regional fair housing analysis to look at what possible impediments we have in our area. And lastly, the city adheres to all fair housing policies and practices in our city programs, such as our housing repair and first-time home fire programs. So with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor for the proclamation.
Okay, and Stephanie, since you put the entire proclamation in your report, I'm going to go every other slide so people don't have to listen to me to read the whole thing, but if you would, I'll read the slide. You can go to the next one, leave it up for a minute, and then go to the next one, and I'll read, I'll read every other one, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
So the proclamation from the city. Whereas federal housing month is celebrated each April across the United States to commemorate the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968. Whereas we recognize Fair Housing Month. It is timely, and we reflect on the importance in communities, states, and nation to affirm civil rights and oppose bigotry and discrimination. Was that a quick flip?
Oh, did you? I thought you wanted to do it yourself, sorry.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's fine.
Okay.
No, I just, I blinked and it moved. Whereas the city of Citrus Heights affirms that every American in choosing where they want to live has a right to live in dignity and safety and without fear of discrimination, and that the city supports state and federal protections against discrimination in the sale of rental or sale and rental of housing. Okay. Whereas the city of Citrus Heights supports the education of homeowners, realtors, landlords, property managers, home buyers and tenants regarding the rights and responsibilities under federal and state fair housing laws. Now therefore, it be resolved that the city council of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the month of April 2020 as Fair Housing Month and confirms its commitment to ensure there is equal access to housing for every member of our community. Thank you, Stephanie, and we'll get that signed and squared away. All right, so the next item, that was our only presentation. Our next item is comments by council members and regional board updates. So Portia, since you are filling my screen, I'll put you up first.
Thank you, Mayor. So last week, the Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Policy Committee from the League of California Cities met, and we discussed a lot of what the city manager covered in regards to COVID-19. And I'm happy to know that we're going to be working to support some of those initiatives and to find some relief for our cities and communities. And just separately, I want to also encourage everyone during this time to really try to stay positive, to stay healthy, to stay safe, to practice safe hand washing, and just, you know, let's make the best of the situation we possibly can. It's only temporary.
Thank you, Portia. Jeannie, you can be next, please.
Hey, thank you. Last week, I attended the Sunrise Marketplace meeting, and on their agenda was the approval of the state of their board of directors and their director officers, the approval of their annual report, their response to COVID-19. We had a report from the city police department and the city regarding our efforts at this current time with COVID-19 and other things of interest. And then the, the rest of the meeting was really spent on the, moving forward with their management district plan and their renewal of the Sunrise Marketplace. And they also approved the draft budget. And so then the other thing that I wanted to, just, oh, mention was I, I was on the web, the webinar today for the League of California Cities, which gave a really good overview of the, the, all the, the orders that have been coming to us from the state and federal and the county levels. It was, it was very comprehensive, and they're doing this weekly. So that is important for us to know as we go forward, and I'm very proud of how our city is responding to this as well. I'd just like to also just remind us to support our local businesses. I just really appreciate our Love Local campaign, and I believe it's going to succeed this pandemic we're involved in now. We're going to keep it going, which I think would be great. I want to thank the people that are out there working really hard so that all of us who need to get things from the stores that we need are, are successful in doing that. They're really, I think, working exceptionally hard. I'd also like to remind our citizens to please fill out your census. We're lagging a little bit behind on that. We want to get all, everybody counted because it's going to have impacts on our community for the next 10 years. So let's get those census numbers up. And finally, I would just like to put out a plug for giving blood. I've been giving blood most of my adult life, and there's a real call for it right now because of the virus. So if you've never given blood before, now is a great time to start. And if you're a regular blood donor, be sure and walk through their doors and, and give your pint. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Jeannie. Brett, sir?
Thank you. I have to start off by saying hi to my little angel Savannah. Daddy will be home soon. Sorry, again, away another night, but I'll be there soon. You know, again, thoughts and prayers, especially with, you know, everybody that's kind of suffering directly from what we're going through, but especially with our law enforcement heroes, fire department folks, first responders. I can't imagine being in that role right now and, and what's going on. So, you know, please keep them close in your thoughts and prayers. It's a special time for those of us in the faith community, and so I just want to encourage people to, don't, don't close yourself out, down. You know, find a way, reach out, get out, take a walk, be cautious, but don't be fearful. There's so many ways, and I know my own family is now, you know, enjoying sharing what we're doing here in this council meeting and with, with this technology, and they're, they're, the little ones are finding it kind of fun, actually. And so make sure your kids connect with their friends too in, in those ways. And the, the last thing is local. You know, my favorite breakfast place has closed down. It is not even able to, to stay open for deliveries and pickups. And it's real, and we're going to not only lose sales tax dollars, which, you know, Citrus Heights lives and dies by the sales tax. So we do need you to spend your money here, but we're going to lose businesses for real. They're not going to come back. They're not going to be able to come back. So find a way, please, find a way to reach out, you know, spread the wealth, spread it around, try some new things. Definitely try some, some of the smaller places, and let's hopefully get through this, and, and hopefully we lose as little as possible, and we do that by way of us supporting those people and those businesses in our local community. Thanks.
Thank you, Brett. Vice Mayor Steve.
Thank you, Jeff. Good comments from everybody. I'd also like to add, not only thank our first responders, but in our medical community, but the folks that have really stepped up in our grocery stores and our truckers. It's just been amazing. I think it goes without saying. So great comments from everyone. Haven't left the house, but have been to a few meetings. Today, we had Sacramento Transportation Authority. We reviewed next year's proposed budget. The board approved education outreach funding for new Measure A, and they introduced the new measure, first reading Measure A ordinance. And the final reading and vote will take place after all the cities have reviewed the transportation expenditure plan. We're reviewing it tonight, I believe, for, three cities have passed it, and a county has so far. And so that's an update on STA. I've also been getting regular updates from Henry Lee at Regional Transit in my role as vice chair there. Had a good conversation yesterday with Rob Paget from the Capitol Corridor, JPA. They are down to 50% service, but still taking essential employees to and from Sacramento and the Bay Area. And of course, appreciate our city manager, Chris Boyd, keeping me updated on everything we're doing. So everyone, stay safe, stay well.
Thank you, Steve. So from my end, I'm just going to reiterate some comments that Jeannie made on the census. You know, we do this every 10 years. This is our time to be counted, and, you know, they're saying that California is probably going to lose one district based on changes in population. We just want to make sure that all the residents in Citrus Heights, it's a ceiling, Steve, go ahead and complete their census. Our numbers, as of earlier this week, we were at 50.9% response. They did give us an extension on that through August 14th. Obviously, the next follow that was being planned was somebody knocking on the doors of those who haven't completed it. They postponed that, but again, you know, we're only at basically 51%. Let's, let's try to do a little better if we can. Similar to Portia, I met with the League of California Cities last week on the Revenue and Taxation Committee and covered a lot of different things that are currently in the state assembly that would affect revenue and taxes. Obviously, that's changed quite a bit. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting some updates on that, so more to come. The Library Authority met yesterday and extended the closures of all the libraries in the county through the end of the month. And, yeah, I would echo all the comments. You know, thank God for the first responders, the mail guy or gal, the, you know, the grocery folks who keep us stocked on food when we go. I did want to end on a little happier note. Did get a letter the other day in the mail from a third grader, and Amy, if you could put that up really quick. Thought we'd end with a little bit of a smile, but got a letter from Nora, and, you know, hello, Jeff, I hope you're safe and healthy from COVID-19. My name is Nora. I'm in third grade, something, something Fremont. I am deaf. My homework, I must write to you. Thank you, and keep our city safe. Well, thank you, Nora. I appreciate you sending me the later, letter. It, when I got it, it put a smile on my face to realize that, you know, at least somebody out there was still keeping up with their homework, so thank you for that. So that's it from my end. Amy, I'll let you kick us off into the next couple of items.
So the next item is public comment. And for the regular portion of the agenda for this section of public comment, I have not received any public comment cards. I do have one for item nine.
Okay, so we'll take that up at that time. Next item.
So the next item is consent calendar items five and six.
All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Consent, sorry.
Okay. So Jeannie moves the consent calendar. I heard Steve and Portia second it, so Amy, if you could call the roll.
Councilmember Bruins.
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thank you, Amy. Next item.
Next item, public hearing, there are none. So the next item is regular calendar, item seven. The subject is the Sylvan 40 Property Market Research and Planning Goals. And there is a resolution that's being recommended, adopting the planning goals to help guide the future development of the Sylvan 40 property and directing staff to meet with Sylvan Cemetery District, and then proceeding with exploring market interest.
Okay, and for those watching at home, Sylvan 40 is the old Sylvan School, 11 acres that the city purchased last year. So I see we have a couple different folks. I didn't know if there was an actual report going to go with this, or...
We have a presentation.
Oh, yippee.
Yay. All right.
Good evening, Allison.
All right, good evening, council and mayor. I'm here tonight with the presentation along with staff and our consultant on the future of the Sylvan 40 property. As you mentioned, this property is the former school site that we renamed to Sylvan 40. So very happy to bring this forward. And I'll bring up my screen here. All right. All right. Tonight, we'll be presenting to you the findings of a market study that we participated in over the past few months. This study reviewed the economic conditions, the development activity, and the trends near the property site and surrounding area of the Sylvan 40 property. We're also going to go over a variety of development concepts on how we might see this site develop in the future. And just as a pre-note, before we get to that, these are going to be just concepts. They're not actual proposals. We're not asking for any choosing of a concept. They're really just being brought to you to give you some context of what we might see or what the capacity of the site is for its development in the future. In addition, as mentioned, we're going to ask you to adopt the planning goals. These are very important for the future of the site as they're really going to be the foundation to help guide the site's future development. The goals will be shared with the development community when it's put out for market, so they really have some context and idea of what we're looking for on this property. And then lastly, we're going to be asking you to give us some direction on ultimate goal of getting this property to the market, out for sale, and exploring our opportunities. And then along with that, meeting with the adjoining cemetery district to refine their, their desires or their wants on the property. This effort, we wouldn't have got this far without our consultant who's going to bring, be going over the market study with you. I'm going to introduce Jim Simon. He's with RSG Consultants, and he really did all the, the technical work on this trends and market study and what's going on around us that's so important that will help guide this property. So Jim Simon's on here, and I'm going to turn it over to him for now.
Welcome, Jim. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jim Simon, principal with RSG. Tonight, we'll be talking about the work that we've done to help the city prepare for partnering with a developer to sell and ultimately develop this property. As was mentioned previously, it's the Alumakers on the corner of Auburn Boulevard where the large plaza is located. That plaza was developed shortly after the city was incorporated. The site itself was formerly occupied by the school, as was mentioned, and the city acquired it back in last fall. Our approach to this was to be cognizant of the city's goals and, and to take into account some of the conditions around the existing area to make sure that this development and the marketing of the site would be achieving the goals of the city as well as fitting in with the context of, of the community. First and foremost, that is to achieve community development. The...
You're fading in and out, Jim. Now you're not there.
You there, Jim?
Allison, this is Chris. You might, you might have to fill in.
Yeah, I think we lost him.
Well, he can try back. Yeah, I don't... All right, maybe you can give us a condensed version. Allison, can you do that, or somebody? Is he controlling? Is he controlling me, PowerPoint, or are you?
I got it.
Okay, great.
Okay. Okay, so as he was mentioning, the goals and the approach that was taken for the study. And we'll talk about the economic conditions, the details and the, you know, the numbers. He's really the person listed this to go over a lot of this, but I sent this out to you earlier this week. So hopefully you had a chance to look at it. He is coming back on, so. Before he gets back on, did you guys have any questions so far?
No, I just want, you know, one, the public to understand, yes, we bought the property so we could, long-term, be able to control, pick or choose, if you will, what development went there. But it is not the goal of the city to continue to own that property. Our goal is to put this out for, you know, development proposals to come back in. We look at what different developers would be proposing along with purchasing that land and then go forward with a cohesive plan for the entire 11.2 acres.
Okay. It sounds like he's having trouble signing back in, so. Okay. So this one just really looked at the labor force, what was in and around. This is the Sacramento area showing that, you know, it's been pretty steady over the past 10 years.
Yeah. That's all shot to heck right now, so.
Yeah, and this was pre-March 19th. And then this one looks at the Citrus Heights area specifically. Unemployment was relative, has been relatively low. Colleen, you're on here, so jump in if there's something I miss over.
Good.
Population growth, although, you know, we've grown at a less rate than the surrounding areas. The blue being the Sacramento and the gray being the county, countywide. But we understand that's because we're pretty much, you know, built out and there wasn't a lot of room. And so this was really just identifying that, you know, these numbers came prior to the COVID-19, and we really don't know, and we won't know for some time, how it's going to impact, you know, all these numbers or our future. It's really uncertain. This looked at the single-family market in and around the property. So looking at Citrus Heights, the median sale price for the two zip codes, along with our neighbors, Fair Oaks and Folsom, and what their average median sale price has been, how that has been going, you know, per square foot. And then the recent developments that have occurred in Citrus Heights. And then proposed, you know, what's occurring right now, what are the trends right now? We actually have two pretty good developments under production right now. We have the Mitchell Village, Mitchell Farms area, 260 units. And then Northridge Grove is actually starting to do some work, and that's the former tennis club there on Mariposa. And that's actually starting to work as well. And then the market, sales market, shows how the prices, how they've been selling. And this has been, I believe, in the past year, some projects in Camden Place. Autumn Wood, how their sales have been, which was the development off of Antelope Road. And how the market of single-family homes, their price range has been overall in comparison to the square footages.
Allison, I'm back now.
Okay, yeah, Jim, hi, yay. Perfect timing, because I was trying to remember what all these little nice stars meant.
That's all right. So, sorry about that, everyone. The, the starters essentially reflect where you'd expect to see new development hap, coming into the market in terms of average price point and size approximately, looking forward out, you know, a year or two from now. Obviously, under, under current conditions leading up to the COVID, obviously pandemic. With that, I suppose we can stop and see if there are any questions on the single-family before we go and talk about multifamily.
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
All right, so the next slides show us where matter lasts with, the market lasts with the multifamily segment. First and off, we're looking at city limits and then various sub-markets in the Sacramento area to illustrate the total size of the inventory, the new buildings, or the number of buildings and that was currently under construction within the area. The next slide talks about specifically some recent projects that have been developed in the area since 2000. There has been a limited amount of new construction in terms of market rate apartments, which we'll be talking about here. But this does show some of those that were built in the last 15 years or so, and their bedroom configurations. This slide shows what's been proposed and under construction both in the city as well as nearby. You'll note a lot of the projects are subsidized to housing below market rate, affordable units, as well as senior affordable units. The one exception to that is the Cambridge Place project, at least in the five-mile radius. If you go further away, there's obviously much more market rate construction that's been going on in the area. The next slide shows where rents are relative to the market. And is, one thing you may notice is that the rents in the city limits are relatively high on a per-square-foot basis, but relatively low compared to Rockland and Roseville on a total basis. And that's generally what you see in, in areas with older housing stock. Rents tend to be a little bit misleading, at least the rents per square foot, because the unit sizes can be larger. One of the things that you've seen a lot of developers do in an effort to try to deliver more housing is to make the overall unit size smaller in order to maximize how much they can capture from that to make projects feasible. So that's sort of a reflection of the existing market. Overall, as was mentioned earlier on the single-family side, it's been limited development in the city recently. A new product that will come in will probably be in the mid to high 400s and then this mid to high 300s for an attached project. For multifamily, primarily, it's been a mix of affordable construction in the area, limited amount of new development. So then I think we can talk about the trends, or I'm sorry, into the development potential of the site, unless there's questions.
Nope. And I would, Jim, real quick, I would just remind folks that if you are not talking, which Jim is the only one doing it at the moment, if you could mute yourself, that would be appreciated.
Okay, so the next set of slides is, was mentioned earlier by staff. We were asked to look at several development concepts for the site. We worked with a local architect to do some conceptual planning. This is really to understand the potential development capacity of the site, particularly if it was not developed for commercial use entirely. In this case, the idea was to sort of look at residential as well as office being the primary uses with the corner reserved for a small commercial use. This is along the lines of the four pillars for development that staff's going to be talking about in greater detail later. One is to achieve the evaluation of the overall quarter. There's a lot of commercial already in the area as well as development that's planned. So we want to make sure that we don't cannibalize that potentials. And so to deliver both customers as well as employees to the, to the area that would, could benefit from the existing retailers there as well as what would be proposed. Capitalize on the design opportunities of the intersection. Again, the city's made a significant investment in the area already. Potential to play off of that plaza as well as the surrounding investments that have been going on in the area. As we mentioned, the types of real estate would be probably in the office or residential context. To be candid, that's as of pre-COVID. Things, things are certainly maybe changing in that, in that vernacular, which is one of the reasons why you'd want to go out to market and to see where things are at by the time you get out there. And then fiscally sound, the city obviously wants to see not only achievement of the community all the goals for the site, but also a project that, you know, pays the city back for its investment in the project and delivers a development that benefits the city long-term. So the plan would be is, is when you do go out and put this property in the market, is to engage developers in an effort to try to find out what they can perform and what they can deliver on the site that meets these goals. And so that's, that's the benefit of getting the private sector involved at that stage. Next slide talks about various development concepts. I have to minimize my screen here. And so we've come up with about six different concepts, which are illustrated on the following five maps. Primary use residential, we will see each of these in renderings for conceptual purposes as well as a secondary use on those slides. And we'll go through each one of those one at a time, so you don't have to hold on to this particular slide. But one thing we do want to talk about is the adjacent Sylvan Cemetery. They, as you all remember, came to council in December of last year when this effort was initiated to do this planning and preparation for the marketing of the site and expressed an interest to buy approximately one or two acres of the property for further expansion of their cemetery to achieve what they believe their growth needs to be. So what we have kept in mind in all of these scenarios is a development that works either at an 11-acre size or a nine-acre size. And you'll see as you go through each one of them, if that northern portion of the site, which will, in this case, be on the left side of the map as you look at it, were to be removed and made available for the cemetery, the rest of the site could still be developed effectively. So with that, we'll go into each one of the concepts. And as, as it was said earlier, these are not proposals. It's not the city that's proposing to develop this property. It's the private market that will be doing that. These, the idea here was to really give, I guess, certainly the public as well as council and staff and the development community an idea of what might be possible on this site. It's very likely that what we'll come back to will be different from what you see here. It could combine a combination of these ideas and, and likely will, will do that. But this is not a time to, to try to annoy any one of these as a preferred use, because again, they're very conceptual feasibility, which is often be done by any developer to make sure whatever can happen actually is economically viable. So the first option that you're looking at here is, is a program that involves really three types of uses. The red on the corner is the commercial site. That's about 12,000 square feet of total commercial. So that would be more of a small commercial center, maybe a couple of shops or a restaurant and a cafe. And then the balance of the site would be dedicated to residential. As you go north, the large yellow boxes reflect the single-family lots. On this plan, we show 40 of those, kind of organized in a grid pattern around a central, small community park area that would be used by the residents. The frontage of the property along Auburn itself would be a more dense project. That would be 24 townhome units stacked right up against the street to create some scale and additional density for the project. The next concept sort of flips that around a little bit with a little more emphasis on higher-density residential for, on a for-sale project basis with smaller numbers of the single-family detached units. You'll see the dotted line, by the way, on each of these diagrams on the left side of the image. And that reflects the portion of the site that potentially could be sold off to the adjacent cemetery district. And still, the project would still work. It's just a matter of lopping off some of the units. The other concepts get into commercial as, as well as multifamily uses. The first here is a combination of commercial uses on the corner that noted by the red as well as apartments anywhere from three to four stories with ground, ground or surface parking lot around the property. This is a total of about 266 units on this diagram that you're looking at here. The next one is an office use where you would have office on the corner as well as office up the block. There would be a small commercial use that would serve the office tenants and nearby uses in the area, but it would primarily be an office serving use. And then the next one, this is a combination sort of of all the concepts where you would have office adjacent to the cemetery portion, some mixed use with probably rental housing on the site. And then the balance of the site would be oriented for the retail component. So with that, I can turn it back to staff to talk about further next steps.
Thank you, Jim.
So I have a question.
Go ahead, Jeannie.
So when we visited this last time, in regard to the Sylvan Cemetery piece, you know, I had made comment, and I believe there was others and maybe even consensus that, that two acres might be too much, that we were really looking at more of an acre rather than two acres.
That's what I recall, yeah.
Yeah, and so as we go forward with the concept, you know, I'd like to see that as the option rather than two acres, because I don't think we had consensus that we were willing to sell two acres to the Sylvan Cemetery. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I don't think there was consensus either way. I think it was, you know, they had asked for two. That was never my figure. It was, you know, a smaller corner over there near them. Two acres is quite a bit, and it impacts this site, you know, so.
I, I think it impacts the project, actually.
Yeah. Fair enough.
Thank you for that comment.
Question.
Yes, Steve.
Thank you. Is there any kind of incentives, either local, regional government, like state government, for transit-oriented development at that site for the developers?
Well, there's, there's some state financing for kind of, like, very, I forget which program it is, but it has to be a very green project and might meet some of those kind of transit-oriented development. It's called an infill infrastructure grant, and that could be a potential here. And what that would do, if somebody was interested in going that route, is we could sort of partner with them in terms of obtaining a grant to, and that would help that, you know, possibly make it more feasible. So if there was a developer that was interested in going that route, we would, you know, be happy to collaborate with them. It's just there's, like, a lot of different programs. There are certain strings attached to different programs. But that is one that definitely could be a potential here.
Thank you. And while I have you on the line, design standards, will they fall under like the Auburn Boulevard specific plan? Or is it just our regular design standards that would come into play for any kind of project?
Right. This parcel is actually not within the Auburn Boulevard plan currently. So I think as we went forward, we would have two options. One would be to actually sort of annex it into the specific plan process, at which time it would have to follow those design standards. The other option is, at the time the project's being entitled, we could develop a special planning area. The other option is, at the time the project's being entitled, we could develop a special planning area. That's, most recently, we did that with Mitchell Farms. And what that did was we tailored design standards just for that project at that site. So we could go either of those two ways. And I think we will, um, once we determine who the potential buyer is and what their plan is, we can evaluate which way we would go.
Great. Thank you, Colleen. Steve, any other questions?
No, thanks, Jeff.
All right. So I'm not sure if Allison or Colleen's gonna wrap it up.
I will wrap it up here for you. All right, so we're gonna talk about, just go over the planning goals. Uh, we were before you in December with these. And, uh, they presented to the draft, make sure we're on the right track. We have modified them slightly since that time based upon some feedback that we received from you and others. Um, but tonight, we're gonna ask for your adoption. As I mentioned, these will really be the basis as we go forward and put this on the market uh, to demonstrate, you know, what we're looking for. Um, so we have some concept goals in mind. And these really just are showing our commitment to the site and how it will, um, interact with Auburn Boulevard and its importance of how it looks. Um, it, reestablishing that area is really a key center, you know, for the city. And, um, not in any future development, you know, we want to make sure that, that they don't re, detract from what's gonna occur still in the future at Stock Ranch. We don't want to, too much retail, um, because there's still quite a bit of square footage at Stock Ranch to develop. Um, we just want to make it compatible for that area in the corner and take advantage of that plaza. The design goals, um, as mentioned, incorporating the plaza, um, and any future development adjacent to the street, that it really doesn't turn its back on the street, that it keeps, um, you know, it fronts the buildings along Auburn Boulevard, um, and doesn't block it off or wall it off. And that we really consider connections to the school and to the, you know, how it's in connection to the school and the plaza as important design feature. And land uses, although we haven't really, uh, you know, identified any particular land use, you know, they could come through, proposals could come through as what we've shown you tonight. Or as Jim mentioned, could be something totally different, we really are open. Um, but when they do come through, you know, a couple of things, we are encouraging some commercial activity at that corner to encourage you, so that plaza with some, maybe some outdoor dining and seating. Um, and this we heard very strong at the December meeting, you know, we really want to prohibit, um, automotive uses. So, um, that would be gas stations or any drive-throughs. We don't want that type of automotive intensive uses, um, at the site. And if housing occurs on the site, that it really would be open for for-sale units, rental units, uh, special units for teachers or any other type of product, we're open for that. And really the bottom line, you know, the financial goal was it's gotta work. It's gotta be something viable for the city. It's gotta be feasible for, for long-term fiscal health. So, um, those are our goals we have presented to you and asking you to adopt.
Great.
And Mayor, uh, this is Chris Boyd, the city manager. If, uh, when you're deliberating, if I could ask just to hear from a couple more of the members about the earlier discussion about kind of the one acre versus two acres. Uh, one of the directives I'm gonna ask, we're asking you to give me tonight is, I believe we should be sitting down first at the cemetery district, so we know, you know, what we're dealing with here. Um, you know, when we go out with the bigger project. So if I could just hear from a couple more and that'll really help steer me when we immediately go and sit down with the cemetery district. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think Jeanie and I are clear, you know, we were thinking more like one acre. And again, there's no gifts here, it's, they're gonna pay for it. We might have to carry it for a bit, but, um, I mean, they get property tax dollars as well, so I'm not, I'm looking to sell it to them, I'm not looking to give anything away. So Brad, Portia, Steve, any thoughts on that in terms of whether you're supportive? And if you are, less than to what's the?
I'm supportive of it, um, but I definitely think that one acre is probably more appropriate.
Okay.
For me, it would be important that it, um, whatever we decide with it, that it has to wait and it's contingent upon what kind of plan comes forward with the rest of it. And, and so that we don't kill a possible plan that would have worked, but now it can't work because there's not enough there. So I think we need to be very careful. I'm, I'm fine with, uh, you know, sharing a little bit of it, uh, but, but not to the detriment of the big picture.
Less is more in this case.
Yeah, and I, I got, I agree with Brett, you know, if the, if the park district or the cemetery district said an acre isn't going to be enough, we need more, then I say, I'm sorry, that's all we have to give and we just go back to Plan A, which is we.
Yep. Okay.
And if I, if I could just, um, quickly add, one of the reasons, and I think, um, city manager Boyd addressed this, is we do, uh, wanna meet the cemetery district first, because we do think it will help us in marketing the property if we can be definitive in terms of whether it's 11 acres or 10 or, or what, so.
Yeah. Now, somebody wants to pay twice and twice what an acre's worth, heck, sorry cemetery district. Doubt that's gonna happen, but, no, we hear you. All right, I think we've given you, uh, some direction. My only thing that I just want to make clear, and especially now, you know, as we go into this, um, it's kind of a catch-22, because we sell it and yes, we have the developer's proposal, but I can think of eight, 10 projects that, you know, either many, many, many years ago when I was in the planning commission, or ones the planning commission has approved that never got built and were sold because the developer couldn't, uh, you know, afford to do it, et cetera. I, I also think when we go through this process, that when it comes down to choosing, we make sure we have a financially viable developer that, you know, doesn't come forward, we sell it to them, they have this plan, it gets approved and then they can't build. So, you know.
Yes, definitely, uh, Mayor Slowey, that would be one of the main criteria when we solicited proposals and then came back to you, um, with them. We would want to look at their, um, the feasibility and their financial ability to carry out that project.
Okay. And Ms. McDeffy, I think alluded to that process there. So you're giving direction to the city manager to go, obviously, everything's gonna come back to the city council for, for any kind of final purchase and sale agreement.
Yep.
The, uh, all right, go ahead, Steve. I have one question, Jeff. Uh, does surplus property come into play here? Would we have to entertain anything the cemetery district wanted to buy?
Well, we, yeah, we did go through that surplus process already.
Oh, okay.
It has cleared that process.
We're cleared, so I, yeah, so I'll just chime in, max one acre.
Can, can, can we hear point seven five? All right. Um, so there's three motions in front of us. I think our city attorney would prefer three individual motions, so I would.
All right, I'll start.
All right.
See, I move that we adopt this resolution of the city council, of the city citizens adopting the planning goals for the Sylvan 40 property.
Motion, and Portia seconded it. Amy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye.
And I move that we direct staff to meet with the cemetery district to engage in discussion regarding their interest in purchasing a portion of the Sylvan 40 property.
Second.
All right, motion and a second by Jeanie and Portia. Amy?
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye.
And then finally, I move that we direct staff to proceed with exploring market interest in the property and offer the Sylvan 40 property for sale.
Second.
Motion and second by Jeanie and Portia. Amy?
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Slowey.
Um, I got demoted, I guess, so, sorry.
Sorry, I'm reading it off my, you know, Vice Mayor Miller, I apologize.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Yes, I'm the one with not quite as much hair. Thanks. All right. Three motions, they all passed unanimously, so thank you, everybody. Thank you, Allison, Jim and Colleen.
Thank you.
Next item, Amy.
The next item is item eight. The subject is Agreement for Cost Sharing with the County of Sacramento AC Overlay Project SB1 Phase 5, um, Madison Avenue from Dewey Drive to San Juan Avenue and Kenneth Avenue to Central Avenue to Oak Avenue. And there's a resolution, um, approving the, uh, agreement for cost sharing.
Okay, move of approval? All righty, we have, did, uh, sorry Regina, but I'm sure you're not going to miss out on the report. And just for folks at home, this is for the northern lanes on Madison. We don't own the southern lanes, but it doesn't really make sense to do half the street and not the other half, even though there is an island down the middle in most cases, so. I did hear, uh, Vice Mayor Miller give a motion. Do we have a second from anybody?
How stuck is that?
We have a motion and a second, roll call, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Um, well, hold on. Can we get some form of report for those listening and not able to just read things like we did?
Absolutely. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Okay, so thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, Regina Cave, General Services Department. Uh, this agreement is to enter into, um, cost share with the County of Sacramento Department of Transportation. This is for sharing in the cost of resurfacing of Madison Avenue, uh, which would cover our side of Madison Avenue, which is westbound lanes. And this would be from just east of San Juan to just west of Dewey Drive. And then Kenneth Avenue from Central Avenue to Oak Avenue, again, paying our cost share for our side of Kenneth Avenue. The total project cost between the two, um, locations is approximately $5.3 million, uh, with our cost share approximately $1,256,000. That also is, uh, including design and construction along with inspection. Once we enter into this agreement and the county, uh, Department of Transportation takes us to their board for approval, they will advertise the bid and construct. And we will pay for the actual costs of work done within our jurisdiction. Uh, our, um, lanes represent approximately 16 to 17% on Madison Avenue and approximately 25% on Kenneth. However, some of the more, um, uh, end-up work on Madison Avenue constitutes for more, uh, more of 25 to 26% of the overall work. So the dollar amount, once they come in and the project is completed, we will pay based upon the actuals. And we have negotiated with, uh, County of Sacramento to pay over two fiscal years, so then we can still retain, uh, half, approximately half of our SB1 funds uh, for 2020, '21 and 2021, '22, so we can construct our own residential or arterial resurfacing project.
I have a question, Jim.
Go ahead.
Uh, does this get down into the weeds of, to the level of, uh, the type of asphalt used where the cost for the, the ability to use rubberized asphalt?
They do not have a rubberized asphalt in this project, um, to my knowledge, but we have not seen the final bid specifications. I can get back to you once we do get the full, um, final bid specs from Sacramento County.
So if we vote for this tonight, though, and we don't like that idea and we like the idea of rubberized asphalt, are we able to come back to it or how would that work?
You realize rubberized asphalt is much more expensive.
Yeah, and it lasts a whole lot longer, yep. Then we don't come back and redo it all the time. So, is there an answer to that question?
So Sacramento County, they would be specifying what materials are that they're using for the project. Um, there has not been discussion of any rubberized asphalt. If the cost comes back and it's significantly more and exceeds what our fair share would be as stipulated in the agreement, we would have to come back to council for approval on that.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Do we have any oversight, um, opportunities? Or are we just writing a check to the county for their work?
We do have oversight. We will be reviewing the plans, speci, plans and specifications before they are issued for, um, advertising. And when the bids come in, we will have the opportunity to review with them as well. And we'll be in full contact during the construction of the project. They will, um, oversee all the inspections, but we will still have full contact with them throughout the project.
Okay, thank you.
Per, perhaps we could do a, uh, bid alternate for rubberized asphalt and see what it comes in at, then decide.
We can ask.
I, I think we had a motion and a second, so Amy, I'll turn it back to you to start over.
Okay, so I will start with, uh, Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
Next item is item number nine. The subject is Deliberate and Vote on the Tentative Transportation Expenditure Plan for the Proposed 2020 Countywide Transportation Sales Tax Ballot Measure. And there are, um, the recommendation is for council to deliberate on the proposed expenditure plan and either vote to approve or deny the plan. And there are two resolutions for council's consideration.
Okay, is this Regina?
Yes, sir. So thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. The item before you this evening is to, uh, deliberate again and vote on the expenditure plan as presented and approved tentatively by the Sacramento Transportation Authority, um, Board. Um, the Sacramento Transportation Authority is charged with administering a half-cent sales tax throughout the region. And this, uh, about a year ago, the Sacramento Transportation Authority, along with their consultant, uh, began meeting with a professional advisory group, which consists of stakeholders from the cities, the county, and other special groups, um, such as, uh, Regional Transit, Sacramento, uh, Metro Air Quality District and Caltrans, to look at our regional unmet needs, uh, capital operations and maintenance. And so, um, from that stemmed, uh, a transportation expenditure plan on the basis of, uh, if we had additional funds coming in through the region. So Sacramento Transportation Authority is entertaining, um, a potential tax measure to go out to the voters this November. And in order to do so, we would have to identify where those funds would go. So with me, I have Mr. Will Kempton, he is the Executive Director of the Sacramento Transportation Authority. Um, and I will assist him in providing some additional shared, um, information on the shared screen for council to look at and review during deliberation.
Ah, here we go.
Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. And I apologize, I also, Mr. Kempton, we're sharing a conference room right now, so I'm gonna have to kind of encroach into his six feet, social distancing to unmute him really quick.
And then for the council, while we're waiting, um, since Steve sits on the STA board once they make their presentation, I'm going to, uh, let Steve speak first, and then we'll throw the rest of us. Gee, thanks. I know. So is Regina, is Will there, or are we?
I, I, I am, as Mayor. Will Kempton, uh, Detective Director of the Sacramento, uh, Transportation Authority. And, um, I, uh, one of the things that, uh, I, I may be good at a few things, but one of the things that I am absolutely not good at is computers. And so, um, I'm, I'm gonna also need help in terms of trying to, uh, uh, move the, uh, move these, uh, screenshots, uh, so that you can see, uh, uh, I, I could take you through the, the package that we prepared. The, the, the first, uh, two I, uh, two, uh, pages here or sheets, uh, are really overall benefits of the, of the Sacramento County Measure 8 Transportation Sales Tax Expenditure Plan. Uh, they were provided, uh, simply for the information of the council. Obviously, they don't, uh, serve well for the, for the public, uh, in terms of, uh, of the, uh, significant content in them. But it does talk about, uh, what the plan provides and, uh, also, um, uh, some of the, uh, benefits relative to, uh, regional planning, et cetera. So, um, trying to move through that. Jean is helping, okay, those, those two documents. And I would encourage you to, 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 to read those at your leisure if you haven't already, uh, read them. So if we could go to the next, uh, the next, uh, item. Um, so as your staff report indicates, you're being asked tonight to approve the Transportation Expenditure Plan, uh, tentatively adopted by the STA Board, uh, on March 18th. Uh, you are not being asked to approve a tax initiative. Um, consideration of approval of the implementing ordinance and placement of a sales tax measure on the ballot will come later through, uh, action of the authority and the. will come later through, uh, action of the authority and the Board of Supervisors. So, if we go to the next slide. Um, want to talk a little bit about building the plan. Regina gave a very good overview, uh, and so I will just, uh, touch on this lightly. Um, but we did, uh, over the last year and a half, spent a lot of time conducting, uh, and outreach efforts relative to building, uh, a transportation expenditure plan. We met with over 150 organizations and individuals and, uh, conducted a public opinion survey in October of last year that included 1,500 respondents, and that's a rather large, uh, poll. We held regular meetings with professional advi, the professional advisor group, which Regina outlined, including Public Works Directors and other senior staff from the counties, uh, eight cities and, uh, other recipient agencies. We held detailed meetings with an ad hoc committee of the STA, uh, board on which Vice Mayor Miller served. He was added to the board, uh, earlier this year. And, uh, we conducted five public STA board meetings, uh, during the period of January through March to allow for substantial public input. And I think that was, uh, very helpful in getting people's viewpoints on the development of the expenditure plan. We can go to the next slide. So, the process, and, um, I think, um, Vice Mayor Miller gave a pretty thorough report, uh, on, uh, actions to date. But just again to repeat for, uh, the public and, uh, members of the council, uh, the law requires the support of a majority of the city councils representing a majority of the county's incorporated population and the Board of Supervisors for us to, uh, uh, consider the expenditure plan, uh, for adoption. Uh, the STA's Board of Directors has voted to present this expenditure plan for approval by the local jurisdictions in Sacramento County. And I think, as Vice Mayor Miller indicated, Sacramento County, uh, the City of Sacramento, City of Galt, and the City of El Grove have all approved the expenditure plan, uh, to date. Uh, after consideration of the local jurisdictions, the STA Board of Directors must adopt an implementing ordinance by a two-thirds vote at today's meeting of the authority. As Vice Mayor Miller indicated, the, uh, board introduced the ordinance and, uh, put the item over for consideration, uh, for adoption at our May 14th meeting. And again, the ordinance has to be approved by a two-thirds vote of the authority. Uh, and then the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, uh, would be asked, uh, by a majority vote to place the Measure 8 on the ballot. That, uh, would be done in the July timeframe if we, uh, are continuing to move forward on the plan. Uh, and, um, that, uh, must be added to the ballot by August 7th. And the measure must be approved by at least two-thirds, uh, of the electorate, uh, in order to be enacted into law. So, if I could go to the next slide, please. Uh, this is an overview of the, uh, actual measure, uh, in very summary form. We're talking about approximately $8.4 billion o, over 40 years. I will point out, these estimates were based, uh, pre-COVID-19. Um, we obviously know there's some impacts brewing, as, as your counsel, uh, clearly indicated earlier in terms of, uh, uh, hit on sales tax revenues over the, uh, over this period. And, uh, so that will also have an impact on overall revenues for, uh, this measure going forward. And so, we're all hopeful that we get beyond the COVID-19, uh, uh, problems that, uh, we're facing. Uh, the expenditure plan includes 10 categories. They're listed here, uh, and, uh, including the percentage, uh, along with the dollar amount that's included for each of the items. Uh, probably most significant are the local street and roads piece, uh, which is getting, uh, nearly 50% of the overall funding. There is, uh, uh, some off-the-top kinds of expenditures that, uh, were important to, uh, a number of, uh, people providing input on the plan. Um, uh, the, uh, rail and transit, uh, gets, uh, in this plan about 40% of the funding with 60% going to, uh, streets and roads. Next is a, um, uh, product of an, uh, project that we asked our consultants to take a look at. Uh, obviously, we know what the direct allocations are per jurisdiction. Uh, and, uh, those are allocated by formula. Uh, but there are other benefits that accrue to all of the jurisdictions as well in terms of, for example, uh, if there are going to be improvements to SACRT, uh, in terms of maintenance and operations, there's going to be some benefit to the other jurisdictions around the county that are members of, uh, of, uh, the, uh, district. Um, congestion relief, uh, obviously, if we're doing freeway improvements in one part of the county, uh, those freeway improvements, for example, access to the airport, uh, can be beneficial to other people, uh, in the county, other jurisdictions as well. And, uh, we've listed all of those with an estimate of what the benefits would be per juris, jurisdiction. Um, this is just a rough estimate. It's designed to try to give a broader, uh, uh, picture of what, uh, would be beneficial to each of the jurisdictions. And, uh, the consultants estimated that, uh, the City of Citrus Heights would be benefiting uh, by receiving about $480 million in benefits over the life of the program. Next slide, please. Um, then we asked all of the jurisdictions to provide us with a list of local projects and programs that they would like to see as eligible for the receipt of Measure 8 dollars. Um, and, uh, the City of Citrus Heights, uh, gave us the list that you see here. Uh, so that means that for those dollars that are available in the local streets and roads piece, um, these are projects, uh, on which, uh, uh, dollars can be spent in addition to, uh, the money that's available to take care of your entire existing system. Uh, there's a second page of, uh, these projects for the city, uh, because there was a whole host of, uh, of, of project eligibility that Citrus Heights, uh, asked to be included in the plan. Finally, uh, there is a, uh, not shown here, but there's a, uh, uh, local projects of regional significance, a formula, a, a piece of the program too. Um, and the city did provide, um, Auburn Boulevard, Phase 2 Madison Ave, the Madison Avenue Corridor, Sunrise Boulevard, and the Antelope Road I-80 interchange project as projects that were deemed to be of regional significance and which the city can spend the, uh, formula piece of this category on going forward. I, I do want to say, uh, we're very much, uh, mindful of the, the disruption and uncertainty caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. The toll on individual families and, and the economy, well, our qual, quality of life has really been unprecedented. However, our effort began with the goal of a planning, a planning for the future of Sacramento County, and we believe we should continue to take the steps to move closer to that goal, not in spite of, but because of the current situation. While at some point it may be necessary to set aside this effort, we know that large-scale infrastructure programs can have a very positive impact on the economy. And so, over the next few months, we will be working with, uh, transportation stakeholders in Sacramento County to propose a package of improvements that can be implemented immediately if voters approve this measure. In addition to the longer-term benefits of the program that we've discussed tonight, your approval of the expenditure plan this evening could contribute to retaining an option or helping to get the county's economy moving again once we have defeated this virus. So, with that, we do request your support for the resolution to approve the transportation expenditure plan for the proposed 2020 Transportation Sales Tax Ballot Measure. And, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm happy to answer any questions. Jeff, you're muted.
Jeff, you're muted.
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
You can. So, what I was saying, uh, Steve, uh, I was gonna say if there's any questions from council before we turned it over to Steve. I, I did have one, uh, for Mr. Kempton. Will, what's the, the breakdown? It kind of went there quick. I know, I heard 50% for roads, and I heard 60%. Is it 60% for roads and 40% for public transportation and all that other stuff? Or is it?
Oh, no. Mr. Mayor, overall, uh, for the plan, it is 60% going for streets, roads, highways, and, uh, 39.87, roughly 40% going to rail and transit.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Will or Regina? If not, I'll turn it over to Steve. Uh, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Kempton. Uh, I will say, he's been a great addition since coming on board in November, December, about. Um, and really jumped into the fire on this one, and he's done a great job, I think, corraling all the politicians and putting together a plan that, that might work. So, as he said, we're considering tonight a, uh, transportation expenditure plan, expenditure plan to take care of our roads and public transit over the next 40 years. Uh, as Jeff mentioned, it's about a 60-40 split between roads and transit. And for Citrus Heights, we currently get about $1.8 million from the original gas tax, $1.6 million is now from the SB1 gas tax, and $2 million current Measure 8. Now, these funding sources can only be used for roads, and these accounts are kept separate from our general fund. If this new measure passes or is put on the November ballot and then passes, our yearly allocation would be an additional, about $3.5 million, and go 100% to our roads along with what, with what we already get. Uh, this can't be transferred to any other operations within the cities, and these amounts can be used to match federal and state grants in many cases to accomplish, uh, much bigger projects. Now, at first, my tuition, given the current economic hardships we are seeing due to the coronavirus, is that there's no way the voters would approve such a measure. I don't have a crystal ball. And come this November, this kind of measure may be exactly what we need to revive our regional economy with thousands of jobs. So, given the back and forth, I'm inclined tonight to say yes to putting this on the ballot and let the voters decide whether they want to move forward to this. It's critical to our roads and to our transit district. Now, if this whole crisis continues to go south on us, I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that the STA board will pull this measure and reintroduce it when the economy recovers. But for now, I'm, uh, willing to, uh, support putting it on the ballot. Thank you, Steve.
I, that, that gives, uh, gives me a question, Jeff.
Sure.
Um, the way this is presented was that we are approving an expenditure plan. So, basically, approving the way the allocation has been presented, you know, all the backup to the 60-40, and we get our piece, then someone else gets their piece. That's what I understood we were voting on it. But I'm hearing Steve say, a, and I also heard, um, Mr. Kempton say, "This is not a, a vote for or against it or, or moving forward. It's just a, uh, a vote on the expenditure plan." But I'm hearing Steve say that if we vote for this, it's a vote to put it on the ballot. Is that correct? So, what's?
No, well, I may have said that, Jeanie, but, but what I meant is, uh, we're approving the transportation expenditure plan. The, the vote, final vote to put it on the ballot, should it, all the cities approve, the TEP and the county, um, would come from the STA board on May 14th.
Okay, so if?
As a tax measure.
If there, if, if our city voted no, then what do we vote? We're voting no, that we don't accept the expenditure plan as presented? Or are we voting no, we don't want to see it go on the ballot? Are we giving a no message to the, the supervisors or the, the STA board that we don't want it to go on the ballot? So, I'm a little confused about it.
May, may I respond to that? So, what you are being asked to do, council member, is, uh, to approve the expenditure plan, which is required under the Public Utilities Code, state, by state law. Um, so, what you're doing by approving the expenditure plan is helping to move this process along. As Vice Mayor Miller indicated, uh, the, uh, actual, uh, ordinance approval, uh, which includes the expenditure plan, uh, will be on the, uh, STA, uh, agenda for May 14th. Then, in July, we anticipate that we, if we're still moving forward, we would anticipate presenting, uh, the issue to the Board of Supervisors, who would decide if the measure gets placed on the ballot. As I mentioned earlier, I think the deadline for that is August 7th. Uh, so, uh, tonight, you'd be approving the expenditure plan. That allows us to be able to, uh, satisfy the requirements of the Public Utilities Code and to be able to present the, uh, ordinance, uh, for, uh, final adoption to the STA board on May 14th.
So, it's a little bit bold, Jeanie. It's, it's a little bit bold.
So, I guess my, my next question, Steve, is this, was this your position when you took the board vote at STA? Or have you come to a different conclusion since then?
Well, um, I've come to the conclusion, and my vote is based on the economic conditions. One, uh, haggling over what I perceive as a shortage of allocations from the new measure. Um, and I, I feel fairly confident now that, uh, we'll be made whole with that. And so, it's a tough decision, Jeanie. I, I really, uh, I'm not trying to push a tax measure. However, I think our citizens need to vote on this. This is very critical to both our roads and our transit district. There's things on there I don't like, that I don't think have anything to do with transit and roads, but I'm not gonna get into the weeds on that. Um, it was a compromise when we, we figured out the TEP to begin with.
So, then our, our, if we voted to approve this tonight, then we are basically moving it forward in the process so that ultimately the voters can make the decision.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. Um, so, we're talking about, uh, the City of Citrus Heights. We're talking about $480 million over the next 40 years. But my question comes down to oversight and project evaluation to make sure that this, these things are staying on track, to make sure that we're staying on schedule within budget. And, um, separately, Regina, is, is this enough money to cover the 10 or 11 projects I saw listed on that slide really quickly, um, that would, that are on our agenda, that are priorities for us as a city?
Um, thank you for your question. I don't think, um, and, I mean, it's not unique to Citrus Heights, but to everybody, um, in the region, there's not enough money to go around to fund all of our projects. That's just the reality. The intent of expenditure plans like this presented before you, um, is that these funds will also be utilized to leverage other federal and state grant opportunities when they do come here to the region. Um, if you recall earlier this evening during the study session, what we presented is that we have an immediate shortfall of $54 million just in resurfacing alone. That does not include, uh, upgrades of all of our ADA curb ramps, our signals, our landscape, our, um, um, trails, et cetera. So, to answer your question, no, this is not enough money, um, but it does definitely, uh, help in leveraging additional funds to come to the region.
And, Mr. Kempton, in regards to?
Councilmember Middleton, I might add to that, that the existing measure, uh, in its first 10 years has demonstrated the value of having these local sales tax revenues in attracting outside revenues. Uh, and the, uh, and the return has been, uh, pretty remarkable in, in terms of the amount of money that we've been able to bring into Sacramento County as a result of having a local sales tax, uh, program in effect. So, uh, there's no question that, uh, that the goal of this new measure is to get at least one-third, uh, of, uh, outside funding for every, every project. And, uh, so far in the existing measure, we've, uh, we've exceeded that by a substantial amount.
And could you also address, um, oversight?
Yes, um, the, uh, the measure requires the continuation of the Independent Taxpayer Oversight Committee, uh, which is a, uh, body that, uh, looks, uh, at the, uh, expenditure of the funds and, uh, oversees an annual audit to make sure that we're spending the dollars, uh, as required. I, I had a question from an, another council member, uh, a few days ago, uh, and I actually reviewed the audit, uh, and it had concluded in our last, uh, audit that we're spending, uh, exactly as the expenditure plan indicated for the first measure.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Did we lose that spread?
Do you have any questions?
Um, well, I'll just go with some comments, I guess, first. But, um, earlier before our council meeting, obviously, we had a very, uh, timely doomsday presentation, uh, about our roads. There's a problem. There's a big problem, uh, and there needs to be a solution. Um, my concern is, is more so in the general sense that, uh, um, more taxes is not necessarily the right solution right now. Um, I have a big concern about, and, and, and kind of missing from our discussions with the council members here, is the 60-40 split. I don't think that serves Citrus Heights well at all. I think that, um, our citizens spoke just a few years back and said they didn't want a tax increase. Uh, they did that, uh, in a majority way. My concern is, going forward and, uh, agreeing to put this on the ballot, our citizens are voting no, but they'll be outvoted and they'll be taxed in that sense. Um, I would almost prefer us to come back and, uh, if we really wanted to tax-
I would almost prefer us to come back and if we really wanted to tax our residents more for our roads and our needs, come back and do it at our level. And, and I know that that probably closes the door to some other monies and stuff like that, but I don't think I'm alone in having a concern over dollars being taken for, from me for road projects that we don't necessarily see happen in the future. It's just too big of a project, it's too big of a timeframe, it's, it's asking people for money, again, that may or may not find its way onto a Citrus Heights road, and I just don't think it's the right thing to do for our citizens. It, it, it concerns me that our residents will be taxed when they don't want to be.
Thank you, Brett. So I would just say, you know, I, years pass out on the STA, and, you know, I think the first measure was good. I think the second one was not quite as good. I'm not thrilled with the 60-40 on this, you know, but I also, there's a couple of things I look at. One, hearing the federal government talk about major structure of money coming. I, you know, anybody wants to ask me outside of right here, I'll tell you exactly how I feel about this, but I also think that it's fair to put it on the ballot and let, you know, the citizens of the entire county have a say. We do benefit from projects that don't necessarily take place in Citrus Heights. Again, if I were designing this, I would not have done 60-40, but I'm willing to say, you know, my personal opinion aside, I'll let it move forward and let the citizens of the entire county have a say on it. So this was, Amy, I think we had one public comment letter from RT.
Yes, we do. And if you're at that point that you'd like me to read that, I can go ahead and read that.
Yeah, let's go ahead and read it into the record, and then I'll see what's the pleasure of the council.
So the public comment was submitted by Sacramento Regional Transit and says, "Thank you for considering SACRT's comments and documents to Item 9. We strongly urge the Citrus Heights City Council to adopt the Measure A Transportation Expenditure Plan. This is a progressive vision that promotes a healthier and sustainable future, pushes inclusive economic development, and improves equitable access for all our communities. With Measure A, SACRT will improve service and increase frequency and reliability of transit in the city. Key projects include expanding on-demand micro-transit service, traffic light optimization, and bus rapid transit in congested corridors on Watt, Sunrise, and Greenback. This will improve local congestion and lower vehicle emissions and ease commute times. Furthermore, improvements to the Blue Line, Light Rail, and I-80 freeway along with express service will positively impact daily commuters. Measure A is an economic stimulus. A strong transit system further attracts future housing and commercial development and brings thousands of jobs to Citrus Heights and the region. SACRT will carefully utilize revenues to attract matching federal and state funds to double or triple the investments in the city. With this measure, SACRT will provide free transit for students and discounts for seniors and disabled riders. With Ride Free RT, we've already seen tremendous growth in student ridership in the city and will continue to partner with San Juan Unified to further improve access for the youth. We'll also improve ADA and non-ADA para-transit trips and increase the popular on-demand rides and electric buses. With your support, we can build better mobility for Citrus Heights and the region."
Great, thank you, Amy. All right, unless there's further comments by council members, I would, what's the pleasure?
I will move approval. I don't have a thing in front of me to read it.
So you want the one where we are declaring a vote to approve the Sacramento Transportation Tentative Transportation Expenditure Plans, to put it on the state's tax ballot measure?
Yes, what you said, but with my voice.
Okay. Sorry. So Portia made part of a motion, I helped her, and we have a second. I'll second it. All right, Amy, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bruins.
Oh.
I'm sorry, was that a no?
That was a no.
Councilmember Daniels.
I join Ms. Bruins in a loud no.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Qualified yes.
And Mayor Slowey.
Yes.
So I'm going to just to chime in, unordinarily on a tax measure, this is, this is not a tax measuring in two-thirds vote. This is an approval of the expenditure plan, so a majority vote would pass Ms. Middleton's motion.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, next item. Thank you, Will. Thank you, Regina. Next item, Amy. You're on mute. There you go.
The next item is department reports, and there are none. Next item is city manager items, which we've heard earlier. And the last is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
All right, hearing nobody rushing up to speak of the four of you. I will just say to the citizens that, you know, we're not through this yet, so stay healthy, stay safe, continue to practice your social distancing, wash your hands, and have a good night. I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Amy.
Good night, thank you.